Stephen's County, of course. And today to look up some stuff they're doing. What I don't... Wildfire protection plan. Yeah, I was gonna put them back.
It says, "Oh, appreciate everybody coming that night." Let's all send the Lord in prayer. Thank you, Mr. Copping, please.
Bless, brother. Dear Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this time, Father, that we can come together and do the business of the county. Father, I pray that you would bless us, bless our decision process, and everything that's done may be according to your will. Father, I just pray for our county, for our... all our different cities, our individuals that make up the county. Father, I just pray that you would bless them. I pray that you would bless those who seek to serve in different capacities. Father, I just pray your blessings and protection over them. Now, lead God direct us in Jesus' name, I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you, everybody. First thing I'll do is approve the minutes on April 2nd, and I'll let you know, say, if you have a motion, they will approve these minutes.
Had for review, I'll let the motion be approved with minutes.
Second, I'll in favor of you. Thank you. Next item is the Wildlife Protection Plan, Mr. Gary Ruppert of Jordan Forest Commission.
Okay, just can I help you here? Eric Mosley, my name's Gary Ruppert. I work for the Jordan Forest Commission, supervise the fire control activities in the county. And for the past few months, our agency, along with the EMA Director and staff, and some of the volunteer fire departments, have been working on a plan called the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Tonight, I brought with me Eric Mosley. He's the Firewise Coordinator for the State of Georgia, and I'll let him explain some details.
Okay, I'm Eric Mosley. I work for the Forest Commission in our Hicklers Office in Macon, Georgia, and I supervise the, basically what we call wild and urban interface areas that kind of stretch out into large vegetated areas. Obviously, this is a county that's growing, and as more homes start popping up in the non-traditional areas in the woods, the Forest Commission starts worrying a little bit. So, the U.S. Forest Service, back in 2004, during President Bush's era, began what they called the Healthy Forest Restoration Act. We were spending a majority of the funding in fire control on defending homes, and we needed to start sort of mitigating those circumstances. So, as part of that, we decided we wanted to take the opportunity to work with every county in the state of Georgia to start working on how we might mitigate some of those circumstances. So, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan came from that. We so far have completed 106 of the 159 counties of the state of Georgia, and all the counties have at least started the process. This plan will become a appendices of your overall county hazard mitigation plan. We've worked with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency on that, and so, in that plan, there is a wildfire subsection, and this plan will become your wildfire subsection of your overall hazard mitigation plan. And what it does to the county is that in the case that you were had a wildfire that might affect the county, that might last more than 24 hours, you then would be eligible for reimbursement for funds, equipment, personnel, and potentially, just like a hazard mitigation plan, anything that you mention in the plan, and things that you want to do to reduce your risk, you then are therefore eligible for those types of expenses after a large event. So, today, we just want to come to you to get the approval of the county commission, and I've got the final color copy. You may have one yourself, but I'll give you a color copy, and if you guys would be able to sign, please do so.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I know in the... in the plan, it talked about grant funding. It talks about collaborative... What? When these things are implemented, I don't know if I'm grasping the entire scope, but it looks to me as this could potentially be a cost to the county to implement some of these things that are in this plan, such as education and all this, you know, a lot of things that it talked about. I don't have it here in front of me, but that is my concern, is...
Sure.
You know, if we're needing to seek... if we're needing to seek grants, there's going to be some expenditures with this plan. Is that true?
Well, the plan itself is more or less a roadmap for the county itself. It is not a Georgia Forest Commission plan, it's a county plan. And so, however much you implement, it's your choice. It is not... we're doing this as us being the experts of wild and fire protection. We are helping the county by creating the plan. The plan is just that, it's a plan. Doesn't mean that you have to implement any part of it, but we want you to be educated and knowing what we can provide to you guys and what you guys can provide for yourselves.
Okay, so it wouldn't cost, as far as, again, on our personnel, it wouldn't be any additional burden on that?
Yeah.
Because these economic times, we don't need something that's going to cause, you know, cause our personnel...
Sure.
...problems either.
Every county is required by law to sign and to have a hazard mitigation plan, to be eligible for federal and/or state reimbursement in the case of a disaster. So, it would be in the best interest of the county and for the cities involved to be in agreeance with the plan, if the plan is, if you're happy with what it says. We can go back and make change with the plan. It is just that it is a plan. Until you sign it, it's just a plan. It's not... it's not your word at that point, so...
But we're not held any obligation, once we... if we approve it, to implement any parts of this.
No, it is just that...
Without due discretion.
It is just a plan, and you can make objections to the plan, you can make appendices to the plan, and you can change the plan at any point. It just becomes a roadmap for you guys to follow, being that you guys aren't probably not experts of wild and fire protection. We are giving you our best recommendations of what the county can do to make it safer for residents.
And if adopted, it becomes part of our HMP, right?
It does.
And referencing what Commissioner Harper had stated about the education and outreach, y'all would provide technical assistance if we do choose to provide those training and outreach, based on what I was reading in the plan?
Yeah, that's my job, more or less statewide, is to work with counties, EMA Director's Fire Chiefs, county commissioners, to help implement the plan. So, if you are interested in the plan, I can find ways to help implement the plan for you guys. And most of the times, at no cost to the county. We do have access to funding for projects, and that there is no cost to the county itself. And any education that goes on, we will provide, or I can provide, at no cost to the county.
Any other question? If not, do it. Here, a motion to approve this plan.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this Community Wildfire Protection Plan.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll in favor of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you, Gary. The next item is County Attorney on Lot Size Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you is the draft ordinance in final ordinance form of the measure that you approved at your last meeting related to the change in the minimum lot size requirement based upon the utilities that are available on the site. I think this matter came out of our annual planning meeting back in December. The zoning procedures law was followed with regard to notification of the public and holding a public hearing before the Planning Commission on March 15th. We've made the recommendation that you consider and approve the change. At last month's meeting on April 2nd, you did, in fact, do that, and so, now before you for final reading would be the ordinance implementing those changes.
You're here, a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you have a motion, your second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a second? I'll in favor of you. All right, thank you. Next item is Mr. Jakes on the Data of Budget Preparation and Off-System Safety Program.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, back during our March meeting, as well as our April meeting, I had asked that we get together to begin review of our budget for the 2013 fiscal year. During the course of those meetings, we ultimately determined that it would be to our benefit to have certain documentation, including the 75% budget report, the digest analysis, as well as other documentation, including but not limited to the department heads' budgets. To the best of my knowledge, we now have all of that documentation in hand, and I would like for us to go ahead and schedule our work session, initial work session, for our 2013 fiscal year budget. And I'd just like to see what dates everybody would have available.
Suggest anything, you know, won't stay away from Mondays or Fridays and Wednesdays. I say Tuesdays and Thursdays are good.
Yeah, I agree.
What about next Tuesday for everyone?
Yes, absolutely.
That would give media time, give us time to do our final review, give time for public notification, and...
Where we gonna hold it? We gonna hold it at the office where all the information is?
It has been extremely beneficial in the past to hold it there due to information being so accessible. That would be my initial recommendation, but I would defer to my colleagues.
May not be best in terms of size, but all the information is there.
All right, what time do you want to leave?
Six o'clock would be normal, unless otherwise, we hear from, you know, the electorate.
I found next Tuesday six.
Okay, you're advising that there is another meeting, more than a session? I'm open, I just want to go ahead and get started.
That's what'll let you know that there is something else.
Excellent. I will defer. Do you have any other optional dates?
No, that's fine. That's fine, I can do it.
Do you get six for our initial work session?
Next Tuesday, six o'clock, we have to start holding our work session on the budgets. All right, the next item is Off-System Safety Program.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, approximately three years ago, we had a considerable need in the county for our paved roads. Our striping had basically, on a number of roads, come to a point where it was virtually not visible whatsoever. The county has a moral, as well as a legal obligation, to ensure the safety of the traveling public. So, at that time, we compiled a list of roads that were in need of striping. We submitted the list to the Georgia Department of Transportation. At that time, they were the agent for the federal government, basically administering an off-system grant for safety improvements. The GDOT, at that time, had an employee that took our list, came out, and rode all of the roads, finalized the package for submission, and ultimately, we received a 100% grant for striping and signing on our county roads that was administered through GDOT. As you're aware, per recent discussions, we're basically in that same situation again, where we have a considerable number of roads that are in need of striping, as well as signing. We have, through our county staff, as well as board and the citizenry, compiled a list once again. We had made accommodation in our SPOS for funding of the striping. As everybody's aware, the SPOS funds are currently not available. I had mentioned at the last meeting, when this was discussed, that we needed to go ahead and make sure that the funding was available in the upcoming budget, so we could eliminate and mitigate this critical safety issue. In the interim, I have since found out that the monies have again been made available through the Federal Highway Administration, back to the Georgia Department of Transportation for the off-system safety program. The caveat is, where GDOT had an employee that was working for them, that took the submission from the county and actually finalized that package for submission to the Federal Highway Administration for approval, they no longer, due to budget cuts, have that position. So, what I would recommend is, the person that I had found out this grant was available from was a former GDOT employee, who is now working for a consulting firm that are working with cities and counties on acquiring these funds. What I would like to see is this individual come and provide us a presentation, just say, at our budget work session next Tuesday, have them on the agenda initially, let them present a proposal to us. We can look at several options. One would be that if we're in agreement with their proposal, we could look at that option. We could look at taking step two, and allowing our county staff to finalize the document to get it to the stage where it would need to be for approval from the Federal Highway Administration, or we could do a request for a proposal from other engineering firms/contractors that would have experience. This could be a significant savings to the county, in which we had already basically allocated approximately $60,000 for the striping, but now knowing that these funds are, once again, available, knowing the critical need, I would like for us to move forward in some manner to acquire the funding, as we had done previously, and thereby allow us to utilize our limited funding for other critical needs. And I would just ask for comments from my colleagues on how you'd like to proceed if so.
I say go ahead and tell this fellow and tell him to be there at our next meeting, if he's got time to do it. Yeah.
Okay, I will do that, and again, I say we could then weigh our options for their proposal, look at other proposals from similar consultants, and/or see if there's something that county staff could finalize the preparation of the package. But I can tell you that time is going to be of the essence, because as other cities and counties find out that this funding is now, again, available, they will be compiling their submissions also. I think we're going to be ahead of the ballgame due to the diligent work and efforts of our county personnel, and already having at least the initial package prepared. Okay, but that being said, and everyone's in concurrence, I will make sure that somebody is represented to be able to at least put together and present us with a proposal or submission of the off-system striping package.
Sounds good. The next item on the agenda is Commissioner Harper on Nails Creek Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last year, we had some citizens come forth wanting Nails Creek Road adopted, but at the time, the way our ordinance was set up, we had to have 60-foot of right-of-way. We've recently, which in turn, they could not get, because there was, I think there were three people at the beginning of the road, that it would come too close to their house. There was some issues there, but recently, we've changed that ordinance to where we could adopt a road ditch to ditch. And they... Nails Creek has got, from my understanding, they've got all the signatures needed, so I would like to make a motion that we do adopt Nails Creek Road from ditch to ditch as a county road.
You've got a motion in a second. I'll in favor of you. All right, thank you. That's been a long time coming.
It has been.
The next item is the County Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. We'll begin with the March financial report. 75% of the year had passed on March 31st for the period of this report. Begin with looking at the cash balances. As you will see later on in this report, our budget numbers are in good shape again this month, but it is our cash flow that I am concerned about. We expect cash balances to drop at this time of year, but our biggest revenue source is property tax, and we receive the bulk of property taxes in November and December, and then those monies have to last us through the 12-month period. So, our cash balance begins to drop around January, and continues to drop each month throughout the year. For a variety of reasons, our cash balance is lower now than it was this time last year. I believe the reasons include the poor economic condition, decreasing tax digest, lagging grant reimbursements, and the unavailability of SPOS funds to reimburse the county for projects that have already been completed. The good news is, we still have over $1.7 million in CD accounts. We will more than likely have to dip into those funds to see us through this lean period, but once these funds... once funds are available, then we can rebuild our CD fund. And if you look on this report, you can see that at this time, cash was already down to $418,000, and it's lower than that now, but we do have the $1.7 million in CDs, so I thought, you know, we're gonna probably have to dip into those funds. Moving on now, looking at the budget numbers. Let's start by looking at general fund revenues. We are in great shape with revenues at 90%, at the 75% point. Moving now through the expenses. Expenses are also in good shape at 79%, so we have a positive net income for the fiscal year of almost $1.2 million. Moving on to the E911 fund. Fund charges are slightly under budget at 69%, with expenses right on target at 75%. Moving on to the water fund. Water fund shows revenues from the... from GIFA funds of over $1 million, and water sewer charges under budget at 69%. But I think that's gonna, you know, it's, we're getting into the warm season, so now people will start using more water and outwatering, that sort of thing, so I think we'll see that catch back up. Water expenses are also in good shape, when you consider that much of the expenses to purchase supplies and pay contractors are being reimbursed with GIFA funds and bond funds. Looking at the solid waste fund, once again, the solid waste fund is in great shape, with user fees at 84%, with total expenses at 61%, so it does look good. And then a summary of all the funds, all four funds shows that revenues and expenses are at 92%, and so, overall, we have a net overall positive income of over $64,000. So, once there's any questions, I'll move on. The next item is GIFA funding for water system improvements. As the commission knows, the county has been awarded a GIFA grant and loan in the amount of $2.5 million for water system improvements, $2 million of which is a loan. At the last meeting, the commission stated its concern about going into debt in the amount of $2 million. An alternate proposal would be to reduce the scope of the project. This particular scope reduces it down to $2 million, and that would reduce the loan amount to $1.6 million. You have water bond funds that could be used to repay a portion of these monies in conjunction with the loan. You would also receive $400,000 in grant funds that did not have to be repaid. So, I understand the commission's concerned about the loan money and the debt, but I would certainly like your thoughts concerning this project at this time, and it is for the Phase Two of the state route 320 water line, plus some additional need replacements in water lines.
Any comments on this line?
Yes, I'd like Commissioner Harper...
Well, my concern is the ability to repay this loan. If we... I know it's been revised down to $2 million, which would leave $1.6 million as a loan. Do we have enough CDs and bonds to pay the balance off at this time?
You have about $1,450,000 in the bond money, so no, you do not have enough to pay the whole $1.6 off at this time.
Okay, question I have, Billy, is GIFA, if we were to move forward, I know that this is structured to be a long-term, low-interest loan...
It is.
...with the $400,000, as would be included in this current package, as debt forgiveness, which would occur at the end duration of the loan. If we were to move forward with this, and within one month or two months, retire this debt with our bond, or let me rephrase that, because it's not bond, is CD monies that have been exclusively relegated for water system improvements, if we retire that debt, will they allow us to do that?
Yes, they will. Of course, we have to keep the $400,000 forgiveness, principal forgiveness as well. So, I did confirm that today. They will allow us to do that. It's not a problem.
All right, any more discussion? Do y'all want to proceed with this project?
I would like to see it reduced. I think that's putting... if we have some kind of emergency come up in our water system, we could leave the county, you know, in a particular, I think.
Have you guys got any comments on it?
Okay, so basically, what we have available is 1.45.
That's right.
Okay, and it would be 1.6, so we're looking at a differential of $150,000.
That's correct.
And there's approximately $3,000, or I'm sorry, $3 million that is specifically allocated in the SPOS, depending on the outcome of these SPOS funds that could also be used.
Absolutely.
What timeframe are we working with?
As far as the project and so forth, the project of this magnitude probably is going to take close to a year to be completed by the time you get approvals from the state. take close to a year to be completed by the time you get approvals from the state, it's already been designed.
Right.
But approvals from the state, get, you know, bidding, contractor on board, uh, many months to, to construct it, so the actual loan payments probably wouldn't hit us this fiscal year, you know, next, many next fiscal year, uh, but, but it could, it could toward the end of that fiscal year, but I'd say about a year from now, probably.
How, how long can we delay making the decision and still receive the, uh, the grant? And, and why I'm, I'm saying that, I don't like counting my, my chickens before they hatch, uh, as far as the, the SPOS.
Right.
Um, you know, if we could put it off and see, um, because what I'm afraid of, we come in and, you know, we only got one-point-four million dollars that we can put down on it, we owe one-point-six. That puts us at a deficit if we have something, a major expense in our water, you know, uh...
It basically puts us at a long-term deficit of, uh, basically a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And ultimately, you're looking at a thirty-year.
I, I think they're twenty, twenty-year loans.
Okay, twenty? Do you know? And I share your concern because at the initial two-point-five, when I started running the numbers, I'm like, there's absolutely no way, because we have to plan for worst case.
Right.
I'm not as concerned, given, because you're also immediately gonna start generating revenue with this part of the system improvement.
It won't be a great deal of revenue.
It's not a great deal, but you will get redundant feed on that whole portion of the system, and it's my understanding that we potentially could gain, because some of the older meters, we do not feel like are functioning.
Yes, absolutely.
Properly.
Absolutely.
That there are losses.
Right, I, I, I agree, we need, we need some, to, to purchase some new meters, uh, as, as Billy was telling me earlier, um...
Billy, is this something that we can hold off and basically table until our next meeting?
I think we could, we could hold off till our next meeting, I'll find out, and then if, if not, maybe we could take action at your budget meeting if you had to. I think a month is not gonna be a problem, but I think if we wait until, say, August to wait to sort of the SPOS to develop and, uh, guys have got an answer there, I don't know that we can wait that, you know, they don't let us wait that long.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about our lost opportunity call, since you bring that up, you know, it, it's, it may be a situation of wait too long.
Yeah.
Uh, I certainly don't mind waiting till the work session, you know, to, if, if you think it's safe to do that, but I certainly don't want to lose this funding.
Well, I mean, if, if, if the board wants to go with this, I'm, I'm semi-comfortable with it, but...
Well, if, if Billy feels like it's safe to, to wait till the work session, I mean, it's only gonna be a few days.
You think it'd be? I, I think they'll be okay with that.
You don't, if you just want to wait till the work session?
I would feel more comfortable in doing so. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with this structure, and, but I would like a little more time to crunch the numbers and look at the impact with our long-term indebtedness.
All right, we'll move ahead then with the LaMonia property. Okay, annexation?
Yes, some documents that were sent to us by LaMonia, get down to the, to the plat. Okay, uh, the city of LaMonia is annexing property off of State Route seventeen north of I eighty-five. Uh, Franklin County's role in this process involves the proposed land use classification of B two local business district. Uh, if you have an objection to the proposed zoning, then the county has a right to object at this time. Uh, my review of the matter indicates that the proposed zoning classification looks to be in line with the uses already in the area, and the proposed project would be an enhancement for Franklin County.
Do you have a motion to approve this?
I happily make that motion and approve this.
I'll second.
I'll in favor then, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item is public comment. Do we have any, any members to speak to nothing?
I'd like to make a request, not knowing what's in that plan that you all got earlier, um...
Wildfire protection?
From wildlife. And since knowing it's property, so whatever plan you come up with, using that plan, before you implement whatever you come up with, since we are the property owners, and whatever you implement is going to affect our property, I'm going to request that before you implement such plan, you present that plan with an explanation of its impact to all of the property owners it's going to impact, as to what property it's going to impact and what cost it's going to be to us. I know they're saying, I could hear most of what this one talked about, uh, that said that there's gonna be all this umpteen lots of money the government's gonna give us, the federal government, to do whatever you plan to do. We, as property owners, would like to know, I would, what impact and cost it's gonna be on my property. And so, when you decide what you're gonna do, rather than just voting on it and doing it, I'd like to have the opportunity to look at it, you presented to us, and we have an input to that plan before you pass it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, let's make sure that we have it in electronic format, let's just download it on our website for review.
We can do that. All right, any other public comment? No other public comment? All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll in favor then. All right, thank you. And thank y'all for all coming out to me.